Okay. Time to call the October 14, 2024 Johnson County Council Regular Meeting to order. And Amy, let's do another roll call for this meeting, please.
Ms. President.
President.
Ms. President.
President.
Ms. President.
Ms. President.
Ms. Meyer.
Here.
John Mallers.
Here.
John Dittmers.
Here.
Emily Reese.
Ms. Ashley.
And again, I want to welcome Ron Bates to our council. This is his first meeting. He was caucused in last month, and we look forward to working with him. So again, welcome. So we'll start the meeting with an invocation. And if you would care to pray with me, please bow your head. And then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we are here today to seek your wisdom and guidance for the decisions we make in service to Johnson County. We also lift up everyone affected by the recent hurricanes. Please comfort those who have lost loved ones, homes, and livelihoods, and grant them strength and hope. Guide our leaders with discernment and humility, and may justice and unity prevail for everyone. And in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. We do have a couple of changes on H 11. Under 21.016, the Sheriff's DOT share, there is an extra nine in there where it says 89197. It should just say 8197. So that is an administrative error that needs to be noted. And also on J 2, the approval of an interlocal agreement with the town of Bargertsville has been tabled at this point. So with those changes, I would be open for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Need to approve.
Second.
Have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now open the floor for public comments. Anyone having a public comment can now come to the podium with a limit of five minutes per person. And it looks like we have a young lady coming to the podium. Hi.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and introduce myself and to provide some information from Adult and Child Health. My name is Dr. Christine Negan Dank. I've been with Adult and Child about seven years. I've been the chief medical officer for six of those years and just also added the president role in July after our former CEO, Alan Brown, retired. So I want to apologize for not being here last month. I believe with the transitions, there was a communication error, but we have resolved that moving forward. But I certainly wanted to thank you all for your ongoing support of Adult and Child. We are very honored to be serving individuals here in Johnson County and are actually looking to expand our services in 2025. I have brought a handout for all of you. It just has some information around some of our past year services, some of the things we expect coming up in 2025. And then there is my contact information on the last page. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Should I bring these up?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments at this time? If not, we will move on to item B. And I'm going to turn this over to Adam to explain what's going on here. We need to open a public hearing. So Adam, our attorney.
Okay. We will convene a public hearing today, October 14, 2024, at 6:05 PM to receive comment on County Council Resolution 2024-04, a resolution of the Johnson County Council making a preliminary determination to issue bonds, as well as a public hearing on additional appropriation of the bond proceeds of the Johnson County's general obligation bonds. And finally, a public hearing regarding a second reading and final approval of ordinance 2024-08, an ordinance of the Johnson County Council authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds. The purposes are providing funds to acquire vehicles, acquire and install certain equipment, complete certain projects, and make certain improvements and renovations, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. Members of the public appearing at this hearing have a right to be heard regarding these matters. If anyone is present who would like to be heard, Mr. Jeff Peters is first going to present to the council, excuse me, his information concerning the preliminary determination. And if there are any members of the public who wish to speak afterwards, they may do so. They'll just need to state their names, spell their name, give their address of residence, and then limit their time to five minutes.
And that's item B, D, and E on the agenda. And now it'd be time for Mr. Peters to come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you all. Jeff Peters with Peters Franklin, your financial advisor for this transaction. As we've talked about previously, the bond issued before you is a general obligation bond repayable from property taxes. You have traditionally done every year one general obligation bond for a various list of capital projects that you undertake. You have also, in the repayment of property taxes, limited the next year's property tax to basically stabilize the rate and continue to accomplish these projects that you need to do from a capital standpoint. This is the same as those previous years. The repayment is for a two-year period. The maximum amount is like $7 million. It is heavily loaded into 2025 for repayment, again, to stabilize that rate of the overall property tax rate of the county. For the amount that this bond issue is, as was last year's general obligation bonds, it puts you in a category where you have a series of statutory information that has to be disclosed prior to your previous public hearing, which we went through, and then we'll do it here. The current and projected annual debt service payments divided by net assessed value. In 2024, that amount is .1045%. In 2025, it is anticipated to be .1097%, and in 2026, .0287%. And again, that would be the payoff of these bonds that you're contemplating today. Second disclosure is the long-term outstanding debt plus overlapping debt divided by the net assessed value. Currently, that percentage is 5.1987%. With this new debt, it would be 5.2636%. The maximum term of the bonds, what you've approved previously in your bond ordinance is five years. But again, this is targeted to be repaid in two, heavily favored toward year one repayment. The maximum bond amount is $7 million. The estimated interest rate and costs are 4% interest rate. Those costs would be approximately $250,356. The current debt service levy and rate for 2024 debt service levy is $5,377,763, and the rate to generate that is .0499, or just under a nickel, per hundred dollars of assessed value. The estimated increase in debt service would be levy $1,998,540, and that increase in rate to generate that would be .0125, or one and a quarter pennies per $100 of AV. The estimated 10-year debt service levy and rate change for 2025, the estimated debt service levy would be $7,376,303 at a rate of .0624. For 2026, levy would be $711,711,674 generated by a rate of .0060. And again, these are anticipated to pay off fully in 2026. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
And this is things we have reviewed prior to in other meetings, yes. So at this point, Adam, for the public meeting, we would, anyone wishing to speak, we would ask to come forward.
Yeah, I would ask for any public comments on the preliminary determination and then also additional, a public hearing on additional appropriation of bond proceeds. If there aren't any, we can then close the public meeting, and then the council can then take two separate votes, one on resolution 2024-04, and then the second one would be the approve of ordinance 2024-08.
And that's C and E on the current agenda.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So at this time, we're open for any public comment. You're welcome to come to the podium. And I guess we should ask for people online as well.
Online comments per state law are not permitted.
Oh, well, there you go.
So there may be public comments that got to be here.
Okay. So we'll give it just a minute. So it doesn't appear that we have anyone coming forward for public comment.
You can close the public comment part of this, and then y'all can discuss and then take it.
You don't need a motion to close the public comment, right?
You do not.
Okay.
Well, actually, yes.
Okay.
Just cross our Ts.
Okay.
Move to close.
Public hearing. Second.
So we have a first by Mr. Dittmers and a second by Mr. Mallers to close the public hearing and the comment portion. And now we will move on, and the floor is open.
Roll call. Get a roll call ready.
Oh, yeah, I guess we better vote, hadn't we?
Do you need a vote on the resolution? We don't need a roll call vote since no one's online to vote.
So all in favor to close the meeting and the public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now the floor is open for a motion on item C, resolution 2024-04.
Make a motion to approve resolution, resolution 2024-04.
You want to just go ahead and read what the resolution is, please?
Resolution of Johnson County Council making a preliminary termination to issue bonds.
Thank you.
Second.
We have first by Mr. Dear, a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approval of the ordinance 2024, second reading. Motion, please.
I move to approve, wait, no, I move to approve ordinance 2024-08. It's a second reading. It's an ordinance of the Johnson County Council authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to acquire vehicles, acquire and install certain equipment, complete certain projects, and make certain improvements and renovations, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Dittmers made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Mallers, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are we good with that portion, Adam?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Moving on to item F on the agenda, which is the adoption of the 2025 county budget. And as a preamble to this, I have a statement that I'm going to read. And once I read this statement, and it's for clarity to the taxpayers, once I read this statement, I will ask for anyone else's input that they may have or choose to speak on prior to making any motions on item one and two. So I wanted to explain, there are some changes tonight in the adoption to the budget after first and second reading. And I'm going to read this rather than talk off the top of my head because I don't want to misspeak. This council sought guidance from the State Board of Accounts regarding the 2025 compensation for salary line items for the Johnson County attorneys. They clarified that while the commissioners set the compensation, the council must approve the appropriation. This council does not have the authority to change this wage independently, but can negotiate if the compensation seems unreasonable. If an agreement isn't reached, and in this case it wasn't, legal action may be pursued. I personally do not believe court involvement would be ideal, considering this change will have a minimal impact on the 2025 budget. Should this matter have moved to the legal system, there would be additional costs to the taxpayers for this council to retain independent outside legal representation. Based on this information disclosed to you today, I recommend accepting the commissioners' proposed changes to the attorney compensation for the 2025 budget. With that being said, I would ask if there's any further discussion, or if anyone else would like to make any type of statement, or if they have anything that they would like to say to the public.
Madam President, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I do have a comment. I think our, this process became somewhat contentious, particularly as it related to compensation. And I think we can expect that same contentious nature to continue into following years if we do not, at some point, find a way to improve our HR approach, probably with, I would recommend and suggest, professional expertise inside that position. Right now, our decision-making is somewhat subjective, and I think that an objective approach is more in the line of what we need when you think about a 600 to 700 employee enterprise like Johnson County.
Anyone else?
With that said, I'll make the motion to approve Form 4 as presented, which includes the following changes. Account 1001-0130000.0122, that is the Assistant County Attorney Line. We're going to, we are changing that to a decrease from the budget to $83,725, which represents the existing salary. Additionally, account 1001-1456-00000.0122, County Attorney increased a salary to $103,449. And finally, as it goes to compensation, 1001.12902.0000.0122.
Supplement.
That's a supplement to the Assistant County Attorney of $10,000. Those are the compensation changes. And then we've got some cleanup items as they relate to account titles. And they are as follows. Position title of Major, it'll become, it's a change to Major 1. Additionally, 1001.11212.0000.0105, title of Major 1 to a change, will become a Major 1001.13000.0000.0105, existing title of Civil Process Server, that'll become a change to Civil Process Server number 1. Two more to go. That title is Civil Process Server number 1. The change is to Civil Process Server number 2. Finally, 1001.14410.0000.0122, that's HSA employer portion, change to HSA/HRA employer portion. And finally, I guess there was one more. On part-time sheet, the Fund for Community Corrections Juvenile should be number 1001 instead of number 1233. That's just a account number change.
Second. Can I run it?
Did you do the part-time?
Yes.
I just did.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Dittmers. We have a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Do you want me to repeat that?
Good job.
Motion carries. Do you have everything you need, Amy? To that part? Okay. That scares me. Okay, are we ready to move on to C, correct?
We skipped the resolution 2024-05 for the three-year court to appeal.
No way?
We have the resolution.
F1.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. So now we move on to item one under F, approval of the resolution. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes.
Okay. You guys with me, or did I lose you? Okay. So we're ready for a motion for the number one, for that resolution 2405.
A move to approve resolution 2024-05, a resolution petition to appeal for an increase above the max levy. It's a three-year growth factor in the amount of $1,700,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Mallers and a second by, was that Mr. Bates?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to approval of ordinance 2024 for the annual salary ordinance.
Is that already there?
We what?
No. I move to approve ordinance 2024-10, annual salary ordinance.
A motion by Mr. Dittmers.
Second.
A second by Mr. Dear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You want item G? Hi, Teresa.
Hi. Teresa P. Trump, county recorder.
So this is approval of an ordinance for the first reading. And it's self-explanatory there when a motion is made. This is something that Teresa's been doing for several years now. So for any discussion? I believe she gave a thorough explanation during budget hearings. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Teresa.
It's always good to say how the health accounts, so.
So whenever anyone's ready, we'll be prepared to take a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 2024-11, first reading. An ordinance granting recorders' request to use monies from the Recorder's Records Perpetuation Fund to pay the recorder's operating expenses, recorder's office salaries, perf, and social security in 2025.
The motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Teresa.
Thank you.
Okay. Item H on the agenda is Consent Agenda. And by a single motion, this board approves these items, which may include salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. And any items listed on the Consent Agenda may be removed by a council member and moved to the regular agenda. So we have several items on the Consent Agenda. So if there's any on there that anyone would like move to speak now, please. If not, we'll move on for a motion.
A move to adopt or approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Dittmers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to item I, Salary Ordinance Amendments, Additional Appropriations, Reductions, and Transfers. First up, we have our Clerk/Election Board.
Good evening. Trina McLaughlin, Johnson County Clerk. So I am appearing before you this evening in regards to a new law that went into effect July 1 of this year. I, as the clerk, serve as the clerk for all seven courts, the secretary to the election board, and as the chief voter registration officer. Per IC Code 371222, the clerk may receive an additional annual stipend for compensation any year that a general election is held. The fiscal body may provide a stipend not to exceed $2,500. I think I talked to Pam, and I've talked to John Dittmers. And when I ran for this office as Johnson County Clerk, I was aware of all the responsibilities and the job duties that are to be performed by the clerk. I feel that I have and will continue to do those responsibilities that the taxpayers of Johnson County elected me to do. A few of the responsibilities that the clerk does just as the chief voter registration officer include registering and maintaining all voter records in Johnson County. To date, we have over 124,000 registered voters. We redefine precinct boundary lines and precincts and notify voters of any of those changes. We process all new candidate filings, campaign finance reports. We prepare, we proof ballots, we test, we prepare voting machines. I also appoint absentee board workers. I do all the training for our poll workers, which a few of you were there. Thank you for that. I also do payroll for all poll workers. I provide supplies, machines to all vote centers for early and Election Day. I believe the reason for this new law is justification to provide compensation for the years that we, as clerks, do elections in our counties, and we not only run day-to-day operations as the clerk, but also as voter registration. Thank you for your time and consideration, and happy to answer any questions.
One question. Your steps are statutorily guided, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Like the auditor and the treasurer and county surveyor and the other elective positions, correct? So the items that you just mentioned there are under statutory. I mean, it's part of your job description, right?
That's correct.
Anybody else? We need discussion for, she had sent a very thorough email along with the statute, and then everybody was provided an additional copy of the statute earlier. So I open the floor for discussion, if there is any.
I support it. We have the honor of Pam being in our training period the other night. Trina, we're proud of you and the way you present yourself and the way you conducted that meeting. I think you did a very nice job. And how many times do you have to do that?
About nine.
Nine times. So our clerk is a fine clerk, and she goes above and beyond the call of duty.
Thank you.
I'll weigh in. As Trina said, I talked her by email today, and John couldn't agree more with what you said, the latter part of what you mentioned. The first part, I struggled with a little bit.
The first part, I struggled with a little bit because this is a state statute that gives us the opportunity to present this from our general fund. It's no different than when we went through the budgeting process. It's just that it happens to be statutory for whatever reason. I'm not sure why, but there apparently is one. But it still comes from the general fund. And I think that, as Trina mentioned, one of the comments I made was, we all know what we sign up for when we run for or run for an elected position successfully and then or get appointed, whatever the case may be. So I see all this within scope of the job. And therefore, I kind of struggle with a monetary support other than, as I said to her in my email, so appreciate the work you do. So that's, I guess it's not maybe a popular decision, but it's kind of where my mind goes.
Anyone else? Trina, thank you. And I agree with, I kind of agree with everything everybody's said up here. Couldn't ask for a better clerk.
Thank you.
I've known you for a long time. All right, so we are, I am open for a motion.
So I move to approve I1 Clerk Collection Board stipend for the Circuit Court Clerk in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Myers and a second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So that's going to be, do we need a, I believe that's going to be four to two. Motion does not pass. Item two on the agenda under I is for the WIC program.
Hello, my name is Tracy Smith and I'm the coordinator for the Johnson County WIC program. And I'm here today, oh, I'm sorry, this is Angela. She would be my alternate if I couldn't make it. So I always like to have her come along when she can to have the experience. This is to add the, my 2025 fiscal year grant, which starts October 1st, from my grant fund into the county line items. Does anybody have?
And the timing of your grant is different is the reason this is here now, correct?
That is correct. We have a fiscal year October in October. It's the federal fiscal year. Yeah.
And this is just appropriating your funds?
Appropriating the money from my grant fund, yep. Okay. I revised it. So just because I have nothing else to do, I had to submit two different budgets. We're opening up a Greenwood office. So I went ahead and tried to be proactive and get some good estimates in there. And so I submitted two, not knowing which one they would pick. And Amy was, you know, go for the higher because she can always go higher. But the numbers came in lower. So I got my grant award just a couple of days ago. So that's why I made the changes.
Okay, so and I believe that you've provided us with a copy of the revised budget, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I just, it's all about timing. I submitted this back in May and I usually don't get my grant award till like October, but that's the way it is statewide, so.
So Amy, the motion would be based on the revised budget?
Yeah, the one, the numbers I just gave, yeah.
Correct? Do we need to read any of those numbers? No?
Oh, please no.
Does anybody have any questions for Tracy or any discussion? If not, I'm prepared to take a motion. And I see this is retro to 10124, which is your grant date.
Yeah, per SBOA, yep.
So how would I, how would I do that? I move to approve I2 as amended?
And retro?
Retroactive to?
101.
101 of 24.
I mentioned the fund number 8216.
Fund number 8216.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Just as a note too, once we get the more finalized numbers for the Greenwood site, the things that are variables like...
Tracy, I can't hear you and I'm sorry.
The things that are variable like for when we get more concrete numbers for lease, utilities, things like that, once we dive into it. If we need to make amendment to my budget, the state is prepared to add additional appropriations to help provide those, you know, pay for those expenses when we open up the Greenwood Clinic, which we're hoping to do a soft opening in December 2024 if things align correctly. But we still have to work with the county attorney with leases and get all the negotiations and things done. So that might push us back till January, but...
Have to close lease yet?
No, we're supposed to get these numbers hopefully this week. They're going to plan to do like a proposal to two different, like three-year and five-year and allowances and stuff. And so once I get that, I'm just going to hand it over to you guys. And then we're supposed to meet with a designer to kind of do some changes. We're not doing major changes. The site's really nice. And it's with a community partner called Valley Vista. So it's going to hopefully open up some really good, they want us there, we want to be there. So negotiations with some things are hopefully going to be a win-win for all of us. It's going to be in the Emerson and 65, or Main Street and 65, like main area where, across the street from Oak and Barrel. There's Valley Vista and there's, it's easy parking in and out. It's about 3,200 square feet. So definitely enough room to grow. Right now, we see 3,200 people a month. Shelbyville sees about 14. And then this potential clinic is going to see close to 3,000 a month, so, or if not bigger, so.
So I'm assuming you will keep us all informed as quickly as it happens?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, it's hurry up and wait. You got to wait for somebody else to kind of get back with you. But I may be coming back again with an amended, but I wouldn't probably foresee that until like the new year, since we're starting off the beginning of our fiscal grant, so.
Now, Adam, will that information be needed prior to what we were talking about earlier on the amended salary ordinance?
No, I think, I think the expenses you're talking about are more operating.
The concrete, yeah, like phones, utility, internet, things that I don't, that they're going to have to negotiate that I really don't know. The only thing that we, I do know that solid is I have five FTEs to open up. So we're already interviewing and getting people in, onboarding, training, you know. So when you open up a clinic, you're not just throwing people in, right? You need to soft open, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tracy? Nope.
All right, well, when the clinic opens, maybe you guys can over and see it. So I appreciate it.
You can all come.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is pre-trial diversion program. Mr. Mallers, I don't think anyone's here and I know you had worked with the prosecutor.
I'm here, yes.
There it comes. You always make such a grand difference.
No poems, please.
A short poem. No, I'm just kidding. We just have the one thing.
Can you speak in the microphone?
We just have the one thing in front of you right now. It's the diversion to kind of get an early start on two of our positions.
For the record, will you go ahead and state your name and position, please?
I certainly will, I'm sorry. Lance Hamner, Johnson County Prosecutor.
Okay.
And we're on the agenda for, to use some diversion money to create two positions that will fade away after we, after the first year.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Mallers. I think you've been working with him.
Yeah, the first position, Deputy Prosecutor, which is an annual salary of $120,000. And the second position was Legal Assistant or Paralegal, which you had stated at $54,000, but it's been approved for $50,000.
Fifty's good, yeah.
And we talked about it and he was okay with just moving that down to $50,000 instead of 54.
Which would reduce the 8,308.000 to 7,693.
Is that what we said? That's what we talked about? Okay.
Well, we didn't talk about what that, the remaining amount for this year would be, but...
Oh, okay.
But it's, instead of 80, what was it?
Instead of $8,308, it's going to be 7,693.
All right, that works.
And that's at the $50,000 rate.
Yep. Any questions for our prosecutor? Any discussion?
A move to approve, what was it, H3, I3 as amended for, how would I go about this? For the 2509.11718.00000.0286. Legal Assistant, Paralegal 14, the annual salary being $50,000 instead of 54,000. And the amount for the remainder, the additional appropriation being?
7,693.
7,693 instead of 8,308.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Item number four, Sheriff Jail. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Wayne Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. I'm looking to get $50,000 for special appropriation for the sheriff jail building repairs. We've been repairing several air handlers throughout the year and we added a power surge protector, which we paid for $22,000 out of our commissary account. And as of Thursday or Friday last week, my maintenance man called me and told me that we had another air handler that was going out. So I did discuss with the commissioners, one of the commissioners this morning, and they will assist because they take care of the buildings. But we, we have others that we have to take care of and that's why I'm asking for the appropriation to make those needed, needed repairs.
These are old air handlers.
The power surges that we had had created a lot of issues for us at the jail. We have a chiller that runs that new section and it was blowing fuses when we would have those power surges. And when one of those occurs, it, it messes with our control panels, doesn't open any doors in the jail. That, that portion is secure, but it can affect the time to reboot, all of that. So it took us a little bit to get to that point. We had somebody come in, put meters on all of our, the power coming into the building to make sure that we could remedy that problem. A lot of times I do take things out of commissary, but right now we're fighting for our commissary accounts with the federal government because I get quite a bit of money from our phone service. But the federal government wants to tell us how we can use that money and what we can charge to do that for our providers. So we have the Attorney General filing a lawsuit for all the sheriffs, but that also affects Indiana Department of Corrections. So I'm kind of watching it fund because there's a lot of other stuff that we use that money for, for special teams or things that we have that, that do come up in an emergency. I think the DOC is probably looking at 28 million they'll lose off their phones.
So this is not only repair and maintenance, this is safety also?
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions for Sheriff Burgess?
I move to approve the additional appropriation, 1233.36001.00000.0124. Building repair and maintenance in the amount of $50,000.
We have a motion by Mr. Dittmers and we have a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Innkeeper's Tax Collection.
Good evening, I'm Ken Kosky, Executive Director of the Johnson County CVT Board. I'm here to request our quarterly appropriation. And I also, I've been meeting with a lot of our elected officials. And so this is the, the information that we've been providing. So I'll leave this for you to read at your leisure. I know you've got a busy meeting tonight.
Thank you, Ken.
And I just also wanted to let you know that year-to-date, we've awarded $169,650 in grants. And when I talked to you about grants last year, one of the things that was important to you was that we reached out to every community and let them know that grant opportunities available. So I'm pleased to say that in every sector of our county, we've provided funding this year. So this is to start new festivals, to build things for their park systems and things like that, that are good for both residents and the visitor.
I've heard a lot of good things down in our, our area, going and working as partners with you, so.
Great, that's good to hear.
Is there skating going somewhere this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Down in Edinburgh.
Oh, Edinburgh.
Yeah, so Franklin was last year and Edinburgh is this year. And our hope eventually is to have a permanent cooled and covered ice skating rink in our county. So these are kind of tests to see how well they go and they've been popular so far. And it, we're hopeful that we could have an amenity like that in our county.
I know the town of Edinburgh, just information, is building on a theme of 12 Days of Christmas and they're running advertisements and they're doing special events, which a lot's going to focus around that. So they're, they're really working toward building up that season, so.
Whenever we give a grant, Edinburgh, they exceed our expectations with Sarah Beth and the team down there, just really taking those dollars and making something spectacular for the town.
Anyone else have anything?
Does this include the budget? This conversation does, doesn't it?
Keep going.
I think we'll probably just handle his operating expense first appropriation and then we'll take up J1 after you do that.
Okay, thank you.
Should we prepare for a motion?
I move to approve Innkeeper's Tax Collections, number 7304, operating expenses as presented.
A motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dittmers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto other business, Johnson County CVT, approval of their 2025 budget.
Yes, so again, this year, a lot of tourism agencies will spend more than half of their budget on salaries. We always run lean, spending less than a third, so that we can put that money into the grants that we just talked about, but also marketing. So in an era where a lot of destinations are losing market share, we're actually gaining it. Instead of people from here going to Indianapolis and spending their money, it's actually the other way around. We're seeing a lot of people from Indianapolis in the north side in our visitor center, as well as further away like Cincinnati and some of those destinations.
Are your collections still at what you thought they, they were going to be, what you proposed, or what you had anticipated?
Yes, they're up 10% this year. So every year since the pandemic, they've been up. So we're, I feel that our efforts are succeeding.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do. Can you be disappointed? Very nice question.
I know, I wouldn't.
How many, how many on staff, staff members do you have?
We have four.
Four?
Yeah.
So four.
Yeah, most agencies our side have, size have like eight, a county our size.
Four.
Yeah.
Then what all is included? You got about $60,000 in operating expenses. What all is included in that?
All right.
Big amount to have, kind of general.
And I believe this should be in your packet, but I'll let you know. So insurance is a primary one. I think we spend $15,000 a year in insurance. You folks know that that's not going to be any cheaper. This is unemployment, mileage, cell phones, miscellaneous business expenses.
Oh, there it is.
And he's got it all broken down in the budget he presented.
Yes, well, I see the dollar amount.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I see what you did. It's in a narrative form, I see. Sorry, I was redundant.
You're good.
And the last, I think the last thing I had was, how does this budget compare to last year or previous years? And how are you running 24 actual to budget?
We are, it's, it's very simple. We are, it's, it's very similar to last year. We are in a strong financial position. We still have, the main area that we still have some leeway is grants. So we have a quarter of the year and we still have, you know, if people come to us for grants, we can still provide those. So just got one today, so we're doing well in that regard, good cash flow.
So the $1,290 total is similar to last year? Is it up a little bit?
Yeah, it's up about, I believe, 90,000 to 100,000. So it's, it's, it tracks our collections.
Gotcha. And you try to do zero, you try to balance.
Exactly. And we maintain the, the county holds any excess. So we have a, it's recommended that our agency have between a half a year and a year in surplus. So for example, Asheville, North Carolina, one of the most successful tourism destinations in the nation, was wiped out by a flood. So that's why you need to keep those reserves and operate conservative fiscally.
Thank you.
I got a question. This, this all looks great and I appreciate all your efforts, but just like to kind of copy off what he said. If you, next year, if you maybe have previous year's information in there, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I'll do a year-to-year comparison next year. I'll make a note for that, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
One of the budget last year was $1,177,325. Was there a proposed budget last year?
And this council really doesn't have a lot of control over their budget at all, correct? This is more of a?
Kind of pass-through.
Yeah, this is more of a complimentary or, or, yeah, information thing. Okay, anybody else? Ready for motion if anyone is prepared.
I move to approve the Johnson County CBT budget, 2025 budget as submitted.
First by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes as presented, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two was tabled beginning of the meeting. So moving on to K, all the new business.
I think we're going to need to table K-1 to make those changes to the prosecutor budget, so then we'll have that before you have the November meeting.
Yeah, we had talked about this previously, that due to the changes to the prosecutor's budget, the WIC information, that, that ordinance 2412, amending the annual salary ordinance would possibly and is going to be tabled until the November meeting. Is that all we need for that, Adam?
Yeah, that's fine. You guys have already appropriated the money, the salary ordinance amendment would just be lagged 30 days behind. So it's something new that we're doing this year. We used to not make all these amendments previously.
Correct. I know that that normally is not the process of amending at the final adoption, so it's out of the ordinary this year. Okay, item number two, approval of resolution, uh, Resolution 2024-TA-1. And this was for the Roy Umbarger &amp; Sons abatement that we discussed last month. And there were suggestions on some changes, I believe by Mr. Dittmers. And they came back with those changes. And so this, basically, this resolution is putting into motion what we had discussed last month, so.
Correct. It, it takes down the abatement duration from 10 years to seven. We are maintaining the prior abatement requirements on this one by not adding any new requirements in addition to what wasn't previously already granted when the council created the ERA and a prior abatement back in 2018, so. And because the ERA was already created, we don't have to go through the formal hearing and additional confirmation resolutions later. We can just, the council, if you deem it worthy of the abatement, can just approve it.
Correct. Any additional information or discussion on Resolution 2024 TA-1?
I move we, I move we approve Resolution 2024 TA-1, Resolution qualifying certain personal property improvements for tax abatement for Roy Umbarger &amp; Sons Inc. for a period of seven years.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dittmers and a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there any other, oh, new business that needs to come forward? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dittmers. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thought that might die for lack of a second.